Call the meeting to order. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us this evening as we make our decisions. Christ name. This is, this is the, yeah, we just need your grade, your schooling, your grade on those. Thanks. This is the November 26th, 2019, regular meeting of the Noonan City Council. Do you have the minutes of the regular meeting, November the 12th, 2019 before you? I'll entertain a motion. We adopt those.
I'll make that motion.
Motion of second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Thank you. Tonight, under reports and commissions, we have the Noonan Cultural Arts Commission, resignation of Joanna Harvey. This is a three-year term expiring in June of 2021. Is there a motion to accept her resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion with regrets if we accept Joanne Harvey's resignation from the Noonan Cultural Arts Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Mr. Phillips, if you'll put that replacement on our next agenda unless someone has that tonight.
No, just with the holidays and stuff, could we just put that on the January?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is Amy Rudnick, resignation from the Tree Commission, three-year term expires January, January 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion with regret that we accept her resignation. All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. And if you'll also place that on January 2020, that's resonate, that's her expired date. So, Planning Commission report this evening. Ms. Dunham, how are you?
Doing well, thank you very much. Chairman Gauz is traveling, so he asked me to give this year's report in his place. As you can see, our Planning Commission consists of the seven members, of six of them were shown in the picture. Mr. Hunt was actually absent for this. They've actually had a pretty busy year. In fact, they have met, this is the second time since 2006 that we're going to meet all 12 months of the year. So they actually earned their money this year. The rezonings, as you can see, we've had eight, and the COAs with certificates of appropriateness, we've had five, and preliminary plats, we've had four. Those were our biggest activities that we've had this year. We've had a few others with variances, special, or text amendments. We did not have any special exceptions or master sign plans this year. These are some examples of the certificates of appropriateness that they've approved. These are areas in the downtown. This is actually a really great tool because it allows us to ensure that being built in the downtown maintains the character of downtown. So, and all these are projects that we have approved. Here's the activity over the last five years. As you can see, what we've done this year with COAs and rezonings and the preliminary plats matches with what we've done in the last five years. Those have kind of been our busiest areas. We typically will get a few annexations, so they're up there as well. Special exceptions and variances typically go before board of zoning appeals and only when they're with the planning, with the planned developments do they come before the Planning Commission. So they don't see a lot of those. The master sign product, master sign plans, those are typically for bigger projects, and we didn't have anybody take advantage of those for this year. In terms of things they'd like to look at in the future, one of those is going to be the modification of the mixed-use development. They do not feel that they're actually getting the product that they want out of that, so they'll be taking a look at that in the near future. Also looking at cottage residential development as a means of stopping gentrification. And then the PC also feels that they see a lot of preliminary plats when the zoning is already in place and they don't get the same type of product as what they can get when they're actually doing a rezoning or annexation request. So they'd like to look at how to ensure a quality residential product is also obtained. In addition to that, they're going to be attending a Planning Commission training in January. And with that, if you have additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Ms. Dunham, of Planning Commission? Thank you very much for your report. We appreciate the hard work and dedication. Also tonight, Mayor Pro Tem Cynthia Jenkins will introduce the Noonan Youth Council who are present.
We have Jayden Kent, 10th grader at North Gate. We have Ashley Guy, 11th grader, East Tahita. Rebecca Taylor and Rachel Taylor, 11th graders at North Gate. And David Brownlee, 11th grader, at the Heritage School.
Welcome. Glad you're here. A special effort on an off week. Mr. Phillips, if you have anything?
No service for me.
I don't have anything this evening. Under new business resolution certifying the results of the municipal election, November the 5th, 2019, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second to adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Thank you. Congratulations. 2019 resolution for employee holiday pay. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments or questions of staff?
Well deserved.
Well deserved. That's right. All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Thank you. The next is a contract change order for additional paving of various streets under the L-Mid program. You have this in your agenda. Any questions of staff regarding this? Mr. Claus here tonight, I'm sure he can answer.
So moved.
There's a motion? Okay.
Second.
Motion of second to approve as presented the contract change order for additional paving under the various streets under the L-Mid program. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Thank you. The next is a request to abandon public right-of-way St. Charles Place. You also have this in your agenda, and it was explained well in the, in the verbiage that we have there. Any questions of staff, though, regarding this? What's going on here? Everybody understand what happened?
It will be up to the process to actually complete this, as the council authorizes, so the accident won't happen.
Right. It's just, this is just the first step.
That's correct.
To allow them to do the surveys and those types of things. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the request to go through the process to abandon public right-of-way on St. Charles Place. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. The next is on-call payment markings agreement. This is something we've been needing for a while in our agenda, that's also explained in the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from staff that are needed? Okay. Any homework? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second we approve as presenting. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carried. Under unfinished business, the first item, I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem Cynthia Jenkins to handle this particular item in that I have a conflict, my firm is involved in the transaction. Ms. Jenkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We have a public hearing for the rezoning of the request of R and B 2019-07 WP Acquisitions LLC for 22.456 acres at the intersection of Bull'sboro Drive and Ashley Park Drive. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing, and we will have a report from staff. Thank you, Ms. Dunham.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a request to rezone the property from CGN to RMH. The remaining two tracts, which are on Bull'sboro, there we go. This remaining portion of the track, it will continue to remain commercial, and their balance of the property here is what they're looking to rezone. There are several site constraints, including 135-foot power easement, a stream running through the middle of the property, floodplain, and road frontage on three sides of the property, and those will require additional buffers and setbacks, and they make the site a challenge to build on. The applicant would like to build 269 apartment units. The majority of those would be one and two-bedroom with a limited number of three. The average rents would be 1,300 per unit, or roughly $1.40 per square foot. The development would include Class A interior finishes and amenities, as well as landscaping that will accentuate the site and utilize native Georgia plantings. Staff has completed an assessment, which is included in your packet, of each of the eight required standards, and I will give a summary of each of those. Staff felt that the use was suitable in view of the zoning and development of adjacent and nearby properties, since it is roughly 500 feet north of an existing 500-unit apartment complex. In addition, the location is bordered on three sides by streets. Aside from the apartment complex, the site is pretty much surrounded by commercial and service uses, which would tend to promote a live-work-play environment. In terms of adverse impact on adjacent and nearby properties, the greatest would be traffic. However, the complex would be located on two streets that currently have a level Service A, and even with the additional trips generated by the project, the service level would not change. Also, Bull'sboro is a four-lane divided highway with a ride-in, ride-out at Ashley Park Drive and a traffic light at Ashley Park Boulevard, and it's capable of handling the additional traffic. In addition, the apartments would have provided additional customers for their surrounding businesses. Could it be used as currently zoned? The answer is yes. It is zoned future, or general commercial, and the future land use map shows it as future commercial. Would the project cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities? All multifamily developments in excess of 150 units have to submit what we call a community impact assessment as part of their application. The assessment evaluates impacts on streets, fire, police, water, sewer, and school system. Each service provider is contacted, and that information is also included in your packet. After reviewing all the responses, staff determined that the project will have, will have an impact on public service, but not an excessive or burdensome, and that's the standard that has to be met. Also, as part of the assessment, each project must provide tax information. Per the report, the project would generate roughly $504,000 in property taxes and over $709,000 in impact fees. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map shows the property as future commercial, so the project would not be compatible with the comprehensive plan's vision for this area. However, it would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning as apartments are allowed in the RMH zoning that they're seeking. Would the proposed use be supported by new or changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? The city completed a full update of the comp plan in 2016 and adopted a new zoning ordinance and course-funding map in September of 2017, and both showed the property as commercial. Staff does feel the project shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, and general welfare and the right to unrestricted use of property. As cities grow, there's a need to provide housing opportunities for all individuals, including those who do not desire or cannot afford home ownership. This need increases as more retail and service providers located within the Noonan area bring more moderate-paying jobs, and as our population continues to age. The key is to maintain a balance between meeting multifamily demands and oversaturation of the market. So in summary, staff found that development met five of the eight standards that we are to look at when we're evaluating a rezoning. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 8th of 2019, and two motions were made for consideration. The first was to deny the application, and the second was to approve it. There were only six members there. It was three-three on each count, so therefore they did not send a recommendation to this board. However, staff would say that if you decide to approve it, then we would recommend the approval be conditioned upon the project being consistent with the plan, density, project data, amenities, and architectural details provided in the application. And that's the Planning Commission report.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. At this time, we will have 15 minutes for the applicant and supporters to speak, and staff, please keep the time.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Melissa Griffiths with Rosen Swag Jones, Horn and Griffiths, 32, Southport Square, Noonan, Georgia, 30263. I'm here tonight on behalf of Wood Partners. I've got Bennett Sands and Tyler Heard with me. Jason Brady is the buyer's agent, and John Miles with Piedmont Hospital is here. I want to make sure that all of the rezoning application materials, including the proffered conditions, were submitted. Also, a standard constitutional letter. We had a development summary report that showed finishes that are part of the proffered conditions, along with a traffic study that's already been performed and submitted, a market feasibility study, and the community impact study. I would like to note, in line with what Ms. Dunham was saying, the traffic study came back and said that RMH would actually be a less intense use on this property than if it remained as CGN. This property was zoned CGN back in August of 2000, when the city underwent an overhaul of the zoning ordinance and amending its zoning districts at that time. It has always been vacant property and has not had any activity as currently zoned for over 19 years. The tract is very unique, as Ms. Dunham pointed out, with challenges from the streams, the floodplains, and the power easement, as you can see on the conceptual plan. I'm going to allow Mr. Miles to speak on behalf of Piedmont Hospital for just a few minutes, and then Mr. Bennett Sands is going to go through the project. We would like to reserve a few minutes for rebuttal if possible. Thank you.
So I'm John Miles with Piedmont Noonan Hospital, and this is a piece of property that we have owned since Piedmont came to Noonan. It was sort of inherited from the previous owners, and we've never had any real use for it. It's been on the market for several years with very limited interest. So when we started working with Wood Partners, we were very excited about the possibility of being able to sell the property and have it be developed into something nice for the city of Noonan, including residences for our many employees. So that's really it from Piedmont Noonan. We have excess property, doesn't meet any of our needs for our healthcare mission, and would like to be able to sell it. Thank you.
Use the right arrow.
Right here. Good evening. My name's Bennett Sands with Wood Partners. I'm not going to use the full 15 minutes. I'm going to quickly introduce our company and then talk a little bit about the project, but I think Planning Commission did a great job summarizing what we're trying to accomplish here. Real quick on Wood Partners, we are a national development firm. Our headquarters is in Atlanta, Georgia, and my territory includes all of Georgia. You know, we're excited to be here in Noonan. Our, our company is vertically integrated. That's really critical for what we do as a development company. And the most important aspect to me is our property management group. Every decision we make, whether it's site selection, number of people in the office, the amenities, the finishes, are driven by real-time feedback by our leasing agents and our, and our property managers. Every day, we've got to make sure our properties are a great representation of what we're trying to accomplish, because every day we're trying to get new residents to either, well, new residents to sign leases and retaining the residents we have. So all the decisions we make are generated around continuing to sell our communities to our residents. In addition, we build our own product. We've got an outstanding construction group, and I, you know, I'll argue we, we build better product than, than anybody else in the industry. A little on the site, I think everybody's familiar with Ashley Park. You know, I've been coming to Noonan for a number of years now, and we spend a lot of time at Ashley Park. It's a great commercial center, but in our estimation, it's, it's missing residential with walkability. And, you know, when we first started looking at this project, our goal was to, you know, sell it as a mixed-use deal, and the, and the challenge with that is we just couldn't fit everything we wanted to on our site because of the challenges with power lines and the, and the stream buffers. But as you step back and look at our site in conjunction with Ashley Park, we're really helping turn Ashley Park into a mixed-use center. And I think that's critical as you, as you think about the future and where people want to live, they want walkability. And it would be great if we could have ground-floor retail, but the site doesn't lend itself to that. But as we look at Ashley Park, we've got great walkable retail for our residents. Here's a zoomed-in picture, and as you can see there, the power lines cutting through the site. In terms of the challenges, it's been, it's been raised a couple of times now, but you can see we've got, you know, both low voltage and the, and the high-tension power lines running across the site, which is the red stripe through the property. In addition, we've got, you know, a creek, we've got floodplains, and what doesn't show up real well on here is the setbacks associated with the creek. You can see the blue line, but outside of that, we've got a pretty healthy buffer on both sides of the creek. And really what it does is it carves up the site into, into four quadrants. And, you know, I think the reason this site hasn't been developed for commercial is the complexity of, of working around all those uses really only lends itself to what we do, which is, you know, density buildings, but, you know, we can spread out into the various quadrants, and I think we've done it, done a good job here. You can see, we've got seven buildings, and, you know, these are bigger buildings than probably what you're used to seeing when you think of garden apartments. Our primary building is this L-shaped building here. It will look and feel like a high-density building, really have a presence on Ashley Park Drive, the goal being to draw residents in. We want to give the impression of this being different than, you know, the garden apartments in the, you know, in the surrounding area. You know, we're trying to set the tone of more of a density-mixed-use type of building, you know, because Ashley Park is more of a high-density corridor. Scattered around it, we've got a more traditional building, which, traditional buildings, which allows us to take advantage of the southernmost portion of the site that's really isolated because of the streams. We've got two stream crossings. You know, we'll have to apply for a permit with the Corps of Engineers to cross those creeks, and in all likelihood, we'll do that with a box culvert, landscape it, make it feel like a natural crossing as opposed to a bridge. You know, we find that bridges over time don't wear well, and, you know, fire, you know, the fire department has very strict guidelines for having those bridges carry the weight of the trucks. A couple of things I want to go into in terms of some of the numbers that have already been spoken to. One, traffic, we feel that, given the location of Ashley Park, the high capacity of Bull'sboro, our, our impact is going to be minimal as it relates to traffic. And, and as Melissa pointed out, it's even less impactful than the current zoning. As far as tax revenues go, it was mentioned, our, the tax base will increase by half a million dollars. I want to make it clear, that's a half a million dollars per year of additional income to the city of Noonan. Impact fees would be a one-time payment of over $700,000. In terms of supply and demand, there's, you know, we've gotten a lot of questions about, is, is Noonan getting overbuilt with apartments? The, the answer is no. We engaged Concord to do a deep dive on the market, and really the punchline is Noonan needs approximately 260 new apartments every year to keep up with demand and the inevitable growth you're enjoying here. The pipeline, well, with the projects under construction and under lease-up, those projects will be completely full by 2021. It seems like a long time away, but it's not. Our project wouldn't deliver until 2022, so, you know, we'll be delivering into a market where all the other apartment buildings will be full and stabilized, and new product will be needed. Another question we've gotten is, and I think, you know, this, this slide helps capture what it really means to be affordable. HUD does a, a good job in projecting what affordable means. They define it as you shouldn't spend more than 30% of your income on your cost of living. And what we've done here is break, broken down our unit mix, our targeted rents, and what that means in terms of the income you would need to live in that unit. And you can see here, our smallest unit with a single resident would require an income of $42,000. If that person is married or sharing rent, you know, obviously that gets cut in half to $2,100. Our two-bedrooms, a single resident, it would, you would need to make $61,000. With two residents, it's $30,000. And what does that mean? We, we pulled up, you know, the average income of a, a school teacher, 34,000, or I'm sorry, 54,000? This is from Calwita's Board of Education website, and we, we went to the state for policemen. The average policeman makes $46,000. So, you know, what I'm trying to represent here is we're building units that are affordable to the people who, you know, work and support the city of Noonan. And jumping ahead to our finishes, these images are a very good representation of the product we would build here. You know, what we're trying to do with our clubrooms and leasing offices is You know, what we're trying to do with our clubrooms and leasing offices is create places that you want to sit down, have a cup of coffee, read the newspaper. Our resident lounges are always a popular feature. What we found with our residents today is, nobody likes sitting and looking at their phone by themselves. They want to be in a public area doing it. And so what we do is to try to create lots of seating areas so people can have some privacy in a public space. Game rooms will continue to be popular. You know, it's hard to find a good Class A apartment deal today that doesn't have a pool table and shuffleboard. We find people don't use them, but when they're leasing units, they really feel like they're going to use them. The same can be said to our resort-style fitness centers. You move into an apartment, you're diving into a new lifestyle, and people assume they're going to use the gym. They use it a lot the first month. After that, it gets less and less. Resort-style pool, we always try to work in dog parks, as are always popular with our residents. And we always like to have a grilling areas represented in the bottom right that kind of lives and feels like a beer garden. Class A finishes, granite, undermount sinks, tile black splashes are standard throughout. You know, we've gone away from carpet in living areas and tend to prefer an LVT-style flooring that looks and feels like hardwood. And again, wherever we can, we work in kind of common seating and green space. And, you know, if we can make the grades work, we always like to have bocce ball courts and cornhole. And with that, and I guess last, this is a rendering of the look and the feel of the buildings, you know, primarily brick with some hardy above. And with that, I'll turn it over to questions or comments.
We have one minute to reserve. We've got one minute left.
Okay. Can we save that and see if there's any opposition, please? Thank you.
Okay. And next, we have 15 minutes for the opposition.
John Palmer, 19 Alpine Drive. I just kind of have a couple of questions real fast. Are the interior hallways or the exterior entrances into the apartments?
You'll have to come to the microphone.
Oh.
Can I get that? Yeah. Answer with a drawing. So typically, with our buildings, what we have is entrances into a common breezeway. So the units are accessed off of a corridor, but you enter the corridor through, you know, we'll have several connection points in the, connecting the parking lot to the buildings.
And just the other question I had was, you said that the, via minimum, or there would be a negative impact on our services. That's fire, rescue, and schools, correct?
Yes, sir. Based on those reports, that is correct.
All right. You didn't say, you just said it would, what is your definition for a, not an onerous impact?
Well, if you have an onerous impact, that is, means you're going to have to put a lot more money into the fire, into the police, into the water and sewer and for capacity. I don't have an exact number on that. It just didn't seem, from the numbers that were given in the report, that they were going to be onerous.
Okay.
Thank you. For that reason, I'm opposed for this, just because we don't know exactly how much impact it's going to be on our fire, rescue, school services. That's going to impact the city for a lot longer than having this apartment built with half a million dollars in additional tax revenue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? And if you do come to speak, you'll need to address questions to counsel.
Hi, I'm Carrie Sykes Knight. I hadn't really planned on coming up here and speaking, but I did want to voice my concern on all the new apartments that have come into the City of Newnan. I took a few minutes before I came and was quickly reading over the packet, and I appreciate the city putting the agenda and the meeting packet online so I could look at it. I did read where the city stated in the last, I guess, six years, that Newnan has, that Newnan has, I think, maybe about 1,300 new apartments in the city. And I think I also read that, also, take that into account, that maybe five years prior to that, there were no apartments in the city. I don't know what the reason being, if there was no demand or a moratorium. But I talked to a lot of my neighbors, and I'm on social media like a lot of people. A lot of people have expressed concern over seeing so many new apartments, seems like just popping up overnight, particularly on Lower Fayetteville, also around Ashley Park Shopping Center. So I know there are people that I think wanted to come tonight, but it's Thanksgiving holiday, so a lot of people are out of town. So I would just like to say, I wasn't really prepared to come up here. I just really wanted to voice my concern on the number of brand-new apartments that are coming into the city right now, and also that are, it seems like they're in the planning and the stages. And one thing I did want to mention, I thought I read in the packet that perhaps the Coweta County School District Operations Manager, it's a long title, I think he said, if I'm not mistaken, I think he said this proposed apartment complex would actually have, would actually, I forgot the wording, would impact schools in the district significantly enough, where he said something to the effect of the schools that would, this apartment complex would feed into schools that right now are at or near capacity. I believe that's his quote. So I think that's what our concern is also. I think I also read that this would require the addition of a full-time policeman to be added also, and then a fully-equipped police car, if I'm not mistaken. So I think, I would just like to say, I would appreciate the city at least considering slowing down, I don't know if the word "moratorium" is pretty strong, but just slowing down and really considering strongly before rezoning, approving rezoning requests for new apartments, and really consider the rate of growth of Newnan right now. And also, I guess I'm kind of, I was kind of curious what the developer said, that with the state of growth right now for Newnan, it appears that we needed to add 260 new apartments every year to meet that demand. And I was wondering if that was like the horse and the cart, you know? If you build it, they will come, you know? So if we keep building these apartments, does that mean we bring more people, or are we trying to meet a demand that's there? I think a lot of us moved to the City of Newnan because we did not want to live in Atlanta. I know I certainly did. I came down here 22 years ago because I did not want to live in Atlanta, and I think I'd like to express my concern that I feel like we're heading that direction, and kind of like a runaway train right now a little bit. And I would just like the city to think about what our plan was for the city. I know this particular property looked like it was zoned general commercial, if I'm not mistaken. So this would be a rezoning request for apartments with maybe some commercial on it. So that, I didn't really come here specifically to speak out on this specific request. I just would like the city to just really consider, you know, taking a breath and looking at our comprehensive plan and making sure that we're not really trying to imitate the City of Atlanta right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Sykes, is there anyone else?
Jocelyn Palmer, 19 Alpine Drive. We're all still reeling from the previous city of apartments, city of homes controversy a few months ago. I wasn't planning on speaking on this tonight. During that particular controversy, I think we all established that that particular parcel was grossly inappropriate for a very dense development. This development echoes some of those concerns and items that we learned along the way with that particular project, the effect on our public safety, the effect on the necessity to fund additional police cars, police officers, and their associated personnel costs. When we got into density numbers that were in excess of about 250 units, it really began to affect response times. It was going to affect fire response times as well. So although $500,000 sounds like a lot of money, and it is not chump change, is that going to cover the cost of continuing operational costs that the city will experience? I don't know, and that is for y'all to judge. However, the one thing that caught my eye, and I was very concerned about in the previous project, and I see that this has something in common with it, is that interior corridor design. We did have some residents who spoke up, who I would consider to be subject matter experts, given that they are in law enforcement, who echoed a concern, or espoused a concern about policing and emergency response in dense properties where, God forbid, we have an incident, and that they need to be able to access a unit, and there's something going on, and they are trapped in the corridor. So the interior corridor design continues to be a great concern for me, and that's what caught my eye as I was listening to this presentation this evening. I get it that they need to do mid-rise-sized buildings in order to make this particular parcel work, but I'm concerned about some of the design elements that they're going to use. Park seems like a reasonable area to be putting somewhat denser housing in. I'll acknowledge that. I am absolutely certain that they will be using the opportunities on tax credits that we all experienced in the last project, and that's okay. But I just want us to think about how this is going to affect our services going forward, particularly fire, police, and school services. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. In the last few minutes left, is there anyone else? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing. I'm sorry, I thought I had a minute. I'm sorry, you do. I corrected myself. Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. As the opposition was speaking, I went back to Ms. Donovan's report and made notes on some of the comments. First of all, the police chief actually said that they are able to service the development. It may have a slight impact on response time, but they are able to service the development. Fire did not have any issues as well, and said that they would be able, had enough manpower and equipment to serve the proposed development. The question about the school system, as you all know, this is the same response Mr. Cheeks gives for every single development, every single rezoning that I've been on. This is the exact same response he gives. And what he says is that many of the schools serving the district, the entire Coweta County, are currently at or near capacity, and therefore, serving the needs of the proposed development may present challenges. He just simply asked that notice be provided to the school system as well as a building schedule in advance. This is the same response for every single development. It is not just unique to this one proposal. Couple other things I'd like to point out is, the city had its own housing study done earlier in the spring. And if you all recall, the results from that study showed that there had been about a 10-year time span when there were no multifamily developments. Part of that was due to the crash of the economy, and people just weren't developing. And so now, what that report showed is that Newnan is behind of where we need to be on offerings for other options from just buying your first home. Not everybody can just buy a home right out of the gate. Sometimes you need to be able to go into a rental, and sometimes you're a renter by choice. And so that housing study that the city actually paid to have done said that there is a need for additional multifamily. There was also a market feasibility study done on this project alone that did take into account all of the apartments that have already been approved, and shows that there still is a need in this area to meet market demand for the population that currently exists.
Thank you. Your minute's up. Okay. Now I can close the public hearing. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the report of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Seeing a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Council members, if you have any questions.
I have one. Go ahead. Go ahead. One, Mr. Sands, I know you talked about walkability, which is great in my book. I'm trying to notice if there's any sidewalks along Ashley Park Drive around the perimeter that are going to Ashley Park.
I don't know that this rendering represents sidewalks, but if you'd like to add that as a condition, it would certainly be our intent to create sidewalk connectivity with the...
And if I can just jump in and add to that. We do actually have a variance request in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals that's set to be heard next Tuesday for a variance from 50 feet to 35 feet to allow for a sidewalk on Ashley Park Drive. And I'm sorry. Right here, to allow for a sidewalk so that we can connect to Ashley Park. We're also proposing, I don't know what to call them, but by Ernest and Jan Taylor's, where the side, where the lights are, when you push the button for the pedestrian crossing, it's not just a normal pedestrian crossing, but with lights. So we're proposing those as well. So we do have a variance request before the Board of Zoning Appeals, trying to get a setback so that we can accommodate and try to have some walkability so that our residents could actually leave their car parked here, walk over to Ashley Park, have dinner, go see a movie, go shopping, and not have to actually move their car. So it's not on this actual plan on the green, but it is in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. We didn't want to put it on this plan since it was, we have to go before them to get approval.
When you say 50 feet, from 50 feet to 35 feet, that's a setback?
That's right, setback. So we're trying to get a variance of 15 feet to allow for that walkability.
How many feet of sidewalk do you have along Ashley Park? Do you know?
Since we haven't completed the site plan or the landscape, hardscape plan, I would say we typically would develop an eight-foot sidewalk.
An eight? Eight foot wide. How many feet?
It will go this distance right here, you know? I just don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Alexander, I don't know what that measurement is. We don't have a...
Probably staff could answer.
I think it's probably, as you said, it's a good point, because our order to ours and the building side, we're going to develop the property out there, so.
Along the whole perimeter? Okay. I just want to make sure.
When you approve property, it requires the construction.
Right. And I want to make sure, because in the past, one property, it got missed, so I want to get that on the record. Thank you.
Anyone else have...
I have a question. You showed a couple of different elevations. Could you refresh my memory as to what exactly the elevation is going to be? You showed two.
Sure. Give me one more. Yeah. Go for it. You start playing. So this is the rendering, the 3D rendering. This is the actual elevation itself. We've got brick essentially making up north of 50% of the facade. The white sections here are hardy siding. So looking back, you can see the white, that's actually a hardy siding. Essentially, everything else you see there is brick on the face. And to give you an idea, this is a mock-up of, you know, the style of brick, and you can see the hardy siding here on the left. Sorry about the ladders and the gutters, but so hardy here, a dark brick, you know, we always try to have architectural elements to, you know, kind of give it a little unique feature and flair. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Appreciate it.
While you're up.
I'm just going to stay here.
Right. Looking at the two different elevations, you know, the two different facings that you had, with... had, the with, looking at the kind of the photographic, you know, the 3D rendering, it's kind of a earth-tone monochromatic, I mean, kind of put it bluntly, it's kind of ugly. Just to put it bluntly. You know what I'm saying? I mean, there's not a whole lot of, anyways, I'll leave that as it is. What is your target demographic?
You know, we're targeting a, well, it's a combination. One, we're, you know, we look at it in terms of employment. We think a, you know, approximately half of our residents will commute to Atlanta. You know, airport-related, the airport-related service jobs are a huge driver. We we find that most of those workers want to live south, south of Atlanta. The other the other half of the resident profile will will be local employees, you know, service, hospital, you know, obviously with the cancer treatment centers and Piedmont Hospital, there's a strong demand for for housing for nurses and, you know, young doctors. I've found doctors are the cheapest people there are, and they're they're consistently looking for, you know, the smallest unit they can get with the most convenience, with good access to the hospitals. So summarizing, you got a commuter crowd going to Atlanta, and you've got folks working at the hospitals and and service jobs in the area.
Okay. So out of the 269 total units, 10 of them were three bedrooms, and then a breakdown of one and twos from there. What is your estimated total number of tenants?
You know, the easiest way to think about it is one per bedroom, you know, one resident per bedroom. Well, I guess you've got couples sharing sharing singles. I would say, doing some quick math here.
Yeah, ballpark's fine.
You know, 500, 550.
Okay. So out of that 500, 550, how many, looking at the vehicle study and the traffic study, exactly how many cars are you expecting?
Well, daily trips is probably the easiest way to to look at it. And our market study or our traffic study projected 1,463 trips a day.
So roughly, if you split that in half, because of the going and coming, 700 cars? Because you have 503 parking spaces. If I remember correctly, it was 500 something, right?
Yeah, in terms of parking, we always park.